...session, Uncle Todd, pulse presiding. Please move our hats, turn our cell phones and papers off please, thank you.
May be seated, come aboard. We're gonna have a pledge of prayer and, you know, we've got to say a couple of extra things. We have a commissioner that's out tonight, he's sick, and we have another commissioner that's battling or something, so I'm gonna ask if we could have a special prayer as well for that too, please.
Christ is heavy, Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day, Lord, we thank you for your grace and mercy, Lord, we just ask you to flood this room, Lord, we search for wisdom and guidance, Lord, Father, we lift up our fellow commissioners, Lord, for Mr. Thomas, I just ask you to just cover his name, Lord, and, Lord, we pray most of all that everything we say and do tonight, Lord, just honor and glorify him, Jesus, in my prayer.
Mr. Jenkins, would you please lead us into prayer?
.......................................
Okay, and I would remind the commissioners tonight, if you could, to get those who want to speak for the mic's empty, so you can be heard tonight.
All right, if we could, please, Madam Perk, if we have rule call.
Fayle?
Here.
Bumper?
Here.
Deveron?
Here.
Yellam?
Here.
Brantham?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Kennamore?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
Lanier?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Pope? Sane?
Here.
Vickers?
Here.
Wayne? Wright?
All right, if you had a chance, in your package, you were saying the minutes from our last commission meeting, I'm sure you had a chance to look over those. And if you have, I've retained a motion to accept. So the commissioner saying, accept.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All that favors it by saying?
All right, now we'll move into county officials reports. Let's see, first, I believe we need to, I believe Dr. Smith is here and wanted to lead off, lead off tonight, presentation. If y'all will notice, we have these working here on the sides, y'all, so this is, this is our first time.
Good evening. I didn't have a lot in January, so I'm very much surprised. I'm gonna leave her. We are going to bring a resolution before you, before you tonight, but before we do that, I feel like it's important that you have some background information and an update on the progress of some of the things that we're doing, so that you better understand the why and the, and where the company's works. Sometimes it's easy to forget all the things it takes to make the school system run on a daily basis, from the time kids are picked up in the morning for transportation on buses, they come in, we feed them two meals a day, so basically running down to different restaurants, teaching all day, support staff that takes maintenance, keeping buildings up, IT is keeping technology quite on, so there's a lot of different things that we tend to forget about at some time, but it takes a lot to make this happen every single day. One of the things, I want to talk about academics for just a minute, we've had two major focuses this year, the first has been on early literacy, because we know the importance of students being able to read. Without those foundational skills, they're going to struggle, not just in school, but in life. So reading, and particularly reading the case study has been a key focus over the last six summers, we have trained, almost retrained, almost ninety percent of our teachers in the Bible public are reading. We're seeing some progress in this, we hope to see it continue as these kids move forward, but I don't want to downplay the diversity, but I want to speak more untied about what we're doing in the high school areas. Last year, we had two courses that students can get dual enrollment credits for from through T-CAT, those were health science and welding at Central High School. I believe Milton High School had computer science through Jackson State. We have the innovative high school grants, this is, is ending gene, so we're racking it up, and this year, we sent a lot of our CTE teachers to T-CAT to become adjunct instructors. What this did was allow all those courses in yellow to become dual enrollment. So last year, we had forty to fifty kids dual enrollment T-CAT, this year, we have over four hundred. That doesn't mean that they'll all get their credits, but they have the opportunity. We're also going to add two new courses this coming year, one is advanced manufacturing at Central, and that is directly aligned with Louisville City needs, and also culinary arts at Milton High School. We are looking at some other classes that we could take teachers that are already in place and add certifications to them, so it does not cost us additional positions. Another area we can focus on are industry certifications. Not every kid's going to college, and that's okay, we need to provide them the same opportunities we provided our college point students. The last several years, we've had maybe two to three students obtain industry certifications, and what industry certifications are, are things like OSHA ten, SERC eight, something that a student or employee can take, a student can take to an employee and say, hey, I already have these skills, and give them an upper hand potentially on the employee. Last year, we had fifty-five, this year, we already have fifty, and we expect that to increase even more for industry. So those are some things that some opportunities we're providing for our students that are not going to college, we're also looking at some things for those who are going to college. We've had two or three courses that were dual enrollment, but we're offering lots more this year, such as ACT work keys, CLIP ASAP, and some other things. The most exciting part, that we just signed a partnership with a few weeks ago, that we are going to formally roll out next week, is a partnership with Jackson State for students who are going to be juniors next year, that have to meet a pretty rich eligibility criteria. Those students can start taking classes in the mornings in high school, their junior year, and if they still live in the past and everything, when they graduate from high school, they're going to receive a high school diploma and an associate security to Jackson State for very little cost, no cost in school districts, very little cost to parents. That's a huge opportunity for kids to get ahead of them. Building partnerships has been a huge priority. So those are some of the academic improvements that we've made, some opportunities we've had through grants and opportunities we've had through partnerships. We've also had some funding opportunities. The MA High School Grant we received two years ago, it focused on three courses, digital accounting, construction, culinary arts. What those did was allow us to upgrade a lot of equipment and also pay for those teachers to be adjunct instructors, not the grants. That did not cost our general purpose dollars, so that those savings went directly into our fund balance. That is ending gene. The other funded opportunity we've had are our ESAR funds, ESAR one, two, and three, which are basically similar to your AARP funds, except that are a lot more restrictive, and they're very, we had rigorous guidance on what we could and could not spend out. What we were able to do was take those things that typically were in general operations that were allowed in ESAR, use those funds out of ESAR, and it saved our general purpose dollar. So examples of that are things like our private day course, typically those have to come out of our fund balance every three years, that's required. That was a level for ESAR, those are savings we'd have that we could go back to. Nurses, instructional coaches, those are positions that we were able to save all of them. The coachroom building, which is behind DEA, we have, we're in the process of getting a reservation out there, it has been city open for about fifteen years, so we have the opportunity through ESAR dollars that we probably would have otherwise, to renovate that facility, and we will get it up to code, get it educationally qualified and certified, so that we can use that building as well. Those are the types of things we've done strategically to increase our fund balance. When looking at the coachroom building, we look at all of our other campuses as well. Seven of our schools were built between nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty-five, two of them, Milton Elementary and Whitewood Elementary, were built between nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty. Our schools are relatively old, most of them are fifty-plus years, and there hasn't been a lot of major renovation or improvement done. The last additions we had were in nineteen ninety-eight. We have used our ESAR dollars, and I'll show you some examples of things that we have done to fix, which is not out of general purpose. One was almost every cafeteria, we got the floors, some we burned, some we painted, made a big difference in some of our schools. The option, up toward the central, I'm pretty sure still have the same apartment in it that the building was built. We took it out, put the flooring in, they painted out of the chairs, painted the walls, it's much brighter, it much better placed, the whole functions, community uses that, it's not just for the school, so lots of things happened there. The one on the right is one of the restrooms next to it, simple renovation there. This is at Ten Elementary, that was a sidewalk that had become pretty hazardous, we put in a new sidewalk, all that was done through ESAR. We put awnings up at Milton Elementary and Whitewood Elementary, both similar to this. And also, this follow-up is the follow-up of Milton and Grand Junction. Early last year, I went to a veteran principal, walked in her building, and I came back and compiled a list, and when I got back that list, it was a lot more extensive than what I thought it would be, on things that we needed to work on. The, I talked to the board, in January, we was gonna leave, but was the first list of January, going to every school, walking through it, and I'm just gonna show you some of the things that was back. Those are hallways in one building, three different kinds of floors, for various reasons, whether it was a leak, something got broken, whatever it may be. That's the floor in one of the buildings. That carpet, I've been for five, been there for over twenty-one years. The door on the right, that's a gap between the interior and exterior. I'm sorry, I haven't checked with my phone. That is the geometr- Grand Junction, it actually flies with the floor with a rubber coating, you can see where it's starting to come up, the flywheel is above there. The restroom on the right, there are about twenty restrooms in that building, which is quite good. We have water damage on awnings, the drive is portable, that we still use for OT and ET services, exposed pipes, hundreds of ceiling tiles, four restrooms. So I think you can see the need there for some, something, some improvement. The board came back and we said, okay, we explored out, we know we have some things we want to improve for our options. One of the options we explored was, we're here to talk about, one of the building. We actually went through with exploring that and contacted the Division of Local Government Finance, they sent us an extensive spreadsheet with a formula, to be able to determine if it was even viable, actually possible. What this formula works off of is the debt of the county, and we got the current debt at the time of the county. We figured, we reached out to contractors, other districts that were in the process of building, got some estimates, the estimate of these buildings now is in the three-hundred dollar range per square foot. A minimum of two, now, would be fifty million dollars, minimal, not in truth we deal with that. But we used that as a number, so that we could get a baseline. And what it did was from the one dollar information that the Division of Government Finance sent to us, there's a threshold of what the debt to the county is paying the county to pay, and that ratio is, that percentage is ten percent, that's the safe zone. Anything below ten percent, they consider it a good standard, anything above, is at risk. What that would do was not only it was no thirty million dollar annual payment, it also put the counties at a debt risk from seven percent to seventeen percent. The board didn't think that was the responsible thing to do, so we looked at other options, the other option was renovations, looking at what are some things we can do, afford, paint, some things that just make things look better, more appealing, and things that change the risk. There has not been a lot of physical improvements, and our building has been a long, long time. We were also working on projects, direct ESAR funds, to replace some windows at doors when it started at Ball Elementary, and one of the reasons was one economic, kind of efficiency in terms of the windows, but two, those classrooms only had, they didn't have exterior exits. When we replaced windows there, we're gonna replace it with a stand windows, so it gives half two exits, get out of those for safety reasons. But the company that was working on one of those windows, when we got into doors, we got into structural issues, so we had to get an engineer to come in and come from that. They gave me a drawing, a draft, of what, an example of something that a renovation could look like, and I'm gonna show you a picture of what something relatively simple could look like, this is not what it's gonna look like, this is just an example. But this is what Ball Elementary could look like with just a simple four doors. That's it. The painting, turning them into four doors in like a second. Not relatively high cost, but big impact. There's a remembering of the agency building. Again, these are just draft examples, but huge impacts. Why aren't we looking at this? What we're remembering is a resolution for educational capital fund, capital projects fund. This is a three-year, five-year plan, it is not even an infancy stage, as yet, it would not be quick, you know how difficult projects like that can be, a time consuming can be, but what this would do is it would bring four million dollars from our fund balance into our general purpose, capital and purpose project fund. This would be for things such as restroom, flooring, paint, outdoor, gardens, landfill, mighty, things like that. Our board is approved this, in April meeting, and one of the things we're thinking about, and the reason we think this is important, is one, look at all the cities, and I talked to majors, and one of the things that they say first is sometimes the businesses come in, what do you think, one of the first things they ask about? They want to know academics, and we're trying to improve that, and they want to see them. I encourage you to have not written on our campuses lately, go look at them. These, this would help the county be more attractive, it also is important for us since we're already here. That is our, to have, to be proud of it, to have something that students are proud of coming to, and to see. I'm gonna pass out the resolution, and let you read it, it's a, maybe.
Dr. Smith, you're moving, you've been moving at four million from your fund balance, capital project fund.
It's an additional fund in our real service. This makes it easier to keep up with, if you want to raise plans to the public, things like that. We anticipate at the end of this fiscal year to have a valid report filed.
What was the question?
Do you, uh, question? You know, if y'all talked to, I don't know exactly the name, I don't know the name of the company, if they're like energy management companies, were they, were they doing, changing out the lights and insulation, had, were they able to come up with any, any ideas?
They did not want to give you any real figures until you sign a contract with them. I didn't want to sign a contract until I knew I had a potential project. They do have some savings, and there's also some low interest, very low interest loans available for that, that can be part of this, I can tell you that a mighty project would be, people wouldn't touch it. So this would be something various, we would have to go with something like that.
Was the, was the line not changed down at some schools a few years ago?
It was.
Yes.
How many years ago? No, it's come, so, ten plus, no, it's come, it's probably been nine years ago, I think it was about ten years ago. We have a place on, as we just kind of got through with some other smaller projects, but everything, there's a huge difference.
I mean, I like to say, this is exciting news for sure. One, one point of interest that you could bring up, and I'll bring up, is athletics. And it's dear to my heart, because I think, maybe you've talked about it before, and others in this room, there's a need to improve athletics in the school system as well. Extra curio, it's very important, maybe a little important, maybe because my kids are involved in, I don't know, but, oh. Regardless, I, I think there's definitely a need there, at some point, I don't know what that wish list is, it's, it's probably pretty big, for sure, but I'd like to see somehow, some way, if y'all are bored, to approve some money to go to athletics, and I'm talking about from golf to football, all in between.
We actually have a plan for that. The four majors, it was relatively small, but we have a plan in place, we can increase it later. It may be last year, we had the four major sports, that is, school, I think we had thirty thousand dollars budget for that, that has been dispersed, this year, I believe, it's some of the middle school major sports next year will be the things like golf, and the smaller sports, then we start over. We do have a plan, thirty thousand dollars doesn't go a long way when you're looking at six different teams.
Well, just like what we talked about in school, over a while, you know, just the little things, and you, you mentioned the community, that's where the community is gonna buy in to the school system. Friday night football, Tuesday, Thursday night basketball, that's where the community is gonna rally and support the school systems. So you gotta keep, I don't mean to harp on athletics, there's a lot more to education than athletics, but that's definitely an area of interest that needs to be addressed at some point, but I will say, again, this is exciting news, and wish you the best, and I support it, and thank you.
Again, this is, this is a once in a lifetime, we will never see the opportunity, two grants like that back to back, that has allowed us to strategically build our fund balance, our fund balance is gonna be like this in the future, it's just not, this is just, it's one of those great times we're in, and we're not gonna, in three years, it's gonna be gone, and we're trying to make sure we have a three- to five-year plan, that we can sustain several different initiatives, and they can do these types of upgrades, to give us a reward there. I'll be close.
And all these funds, I would like to know, do the, do the principal have to apply or ask for, or the community?
I don't know. For, this, no.
For the stuff, for, like, for the schools, the academics, or whatever, they want to try to apply, have a school to, because, I can speak for my, my district now, Grand Junction, we don't have any, Grand Junction don't have any academics, just P E there at school.
Right.
To have no basketball, or no little league, anything for the kids.
We're actually working on, we're obviously working for general purpose, not for this. One of the issues we're forced, and as I said, that is, it's hard to find such a, that you work the little league, or anything, it's really difficult to find, I just.
I would say, I am a spiritual therapist, and it is well needed, what the remote on everything, the agency, the university, the line, have, Chris, at the board.
Chris, do you need a, a motion to accept this resolution from this commission?
We need a ten.
Okay, this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution, that actually presented to this commission. Motion has been made.
Second.
And second. Any discussion? Uh, we're ready, Mike, so we need to have a rule call, please.
Fayle?
Yes.
Bumper?
I do recognize that I have relative to the work of the school system, and I was elected by my constituents to serve my community, so my board will be, yes.
Deveron?
I guess no conflict, I vote yes.
Yellam?
Yes.
Brantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
I really appreciate it, this is not gonna happen overnight, it's not gonna be easy, but it's gonna be great. We'll all, we'll all go look at it, we can get done, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a great project.
Actually, put your, put your tennis partner, maybe, if you want to put in.
We can get started pretty quick, what we're gonna have to do is probably look at project manager, to make sure we're doing this efficiently. Make it, they work every day, it'll go, that'll be our first job.
Dr. Smith, we have a question, first. Go on back to one of your slides, and you were speaking about, you were showing about Jackson State, and, um, when the children can start taking courses while they are in school, do you think that some of the vulnerabilities would have to come from any parent?
It, it is, but it's like, I'm curious about what the situation is, it is, they're in the middle of it. And we think it's more with businesses that will talk to that. We've got to be careful, just with that person. Thank you very much.
Mr. Swift?
Yes, sir.
On, Mr. Swift.
Three. Good evening, commissioners, I've got two things for you guys to write, the first one is a budget minute, my board and us, and I, I'm sorry, uh, we got notification from one of our truck companies, we had a truck on board, it was due to be released in July, August, and it was coming, they called me a couple of weeks ago, and said, hey, is truck ready? We got it, I'm on my stuff, somebody does. So, my board, we met, and we discussed, and they, they want to wait to see purchases, but in order for purchase, about four, ninety-seven thousand out of the fund balance, to purchase, so, that's what, my board wanted to wait and move forward with that, so that's what I'm here asking for, on the budget minute, approval to move ninety-seven thousand from high fund balance into the budget, waiting purchases truck. It's a small blunt truck, off the stores well, I've got, anybody want to see specifications on that, I don't have time to give it up here, but it's, just a little teeny tiny blunt truck.
I make a motion, to move this ninety-seven thousand, one seventeen, from the fund balance to the purchase.
All right, motion has been made.
Second.
And second. Any discussion, please?
Casey, how much is your fund balance?
How much what?
Your fund balance.
Over three million, I don't know the exact number, if it's three million, something.
Any other questions? All right, if none, we'll have a rule call, please.
Fayle?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Deveron?
Yes.
Yellam?
Yes.
Brantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wright?
Thank y'all. Uh, the second thing I have for you is, when we had our audit this year, we had discussion point on our budget, where we had deducted the amount to put into our budget to be approved from our fund balance. What the auditor says, they want that beginning fund balance number on the budget before we take anything out, so they sent me this resolution to correct that discussion point off of our audit, and this comes from the comptroller's office, and all it has is a resolution to correct last year's budget, just by taking those numbers out, putting them under banking, so, that's just a simple resolution. Auditor's had, just to correct our discussion point on our audit, on finding our audit, so this is the way you corrected, that's what they said.
I move we accept this resolution. Is ready.
Motion has been made, and commissioner, we have a second.
I have a second.
Commissioner knows, second at that time, but, any discussion, here, resolution. All right, any rule call, next, uh, Chris, that was, we do not need a rule call.
This is crazy, yes, it's, it just changes your beginning fund balance, they knew we took the money out and put it in our general budget that you guys approved, but this is just, they wanted the beginning fund balance, not this only budget, only time to, to get you guys, just so y'all know what we started. To get you guys, just so y'all know what we started with, yeah.
So you wasn't showing your, your fund balance on that?
Yes, it was, but it was after we deducted money from the end drive, but we pulled money out last year out of our fund balance to get the purchase of the bank. But they don't, they don't want you to deduct, they want you to show them, beginning fund.
I think, I think they just see it there. When you have the document.
This is for the other company, but you.
No, that's, this time, that's.
The way it stated, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, this is correction, I'm asking, this is twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, we're supposed to, I'm sorry. If y'all, if you'll get the, I can get a copy made, if y'all just approve it honestly, say twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three. We haven't approved twenty-three and twenty-four, y'all.
Correct. As a meeting.
But anyway, that's a break, twenty-two, twenty-three.
All right.
Yeah, I, I would say my motion.
Right.
Sorry.
All right, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Oh, I would say my motion, yeah, and you motion that three, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. That's good, you're fine.
That's fine.
All right.
I said it, we're correct.
All right. I'll be in contact, come in.
Any more discussions, let me get all those in paper, please, since I have a second.
All right.
All, both, I like that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I, I'm just, uh, admitting an error because I believe Eric that was doing my payroll and stuff, he quit there about a month or so, so I hired Amy Hannison, and she's learning everything, so... Maybe a slow girl on that, and, but I'll get everything covered.
Casey, for you, is there, um, was there a way to show that it was, or anything like this?
Oh, yeah, like, uh, the Transformation Modernization Act was passed for government lease owners, so we've got, we're getting, Hart County, Hart County's getting three and a half million after that. So, well, they have decided they're gonna lease all of it in one year or do it throughout five years. So that's, this is what we're talking about right now, but, uh, and now also, that Modernization Act, Governor, uh, Luchey, put in seven hundred fifty for each region on the state highways too, so... We've got, I know this year, one twenty-five south and one twenty-five north, the state already scheduled to be paid. One twenty-five north is gonna be a double micro with a stretch seal on top of it, and highway one twenty-five south, all highway one twenty-five south, so then you pay them, so...
Thank you, Mr. Swift.
Mr. Swift, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not, thank you.
Miss Hannison? Anything you can say? See, and our, the officials here, uh, before we go into, uh, any literal report? Yeah, we need to have, yeah, we need to hear that.
Uh, I know I give a last, but we, uh... So, the literal report last, uh, last month, February, uh, I'm sorry, March, was sixteen thousand three hundred forty pounds of garbage picked up. Uh, the total for April so far is seven thousand, seven hundred, twenty thousand of garbage picked up. Which makes grand total for the year of ninety-nine thousand three hundred pounds of garbage picked up off the camera.
I have a question, uh, Ebenezer in North eighteen, it's pretty bad, I don't know, you may have picked it up after there, a couple weeks ago, it's hard. It's one of many roads in the county out here.
I don't think they've got a bad avenue yet.
What areas of interest are you working on right now, is it north, south, just wherever you?
Wherever we get, usually where we go, uh, depending on how long the road is, I know same road, Piedmont Road took about the longest, because they're, took the longest road to the county, but, um, it's, uh... It's, uh, it's still ongoing, and he goes, he goes everywhere, I know, we're working on Oak Hill Road right now, and he's amazing what's out there.
I know. How many trustees you got doing that?
I've got three trustees and a one truck supervisor.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, we have any committee reports tonight? Thank you, ma'am. Uh, law enforcement, please. Doctor, if you have a next one, please.
Okay, excellent.
Commissioner Mike, thank you, honor. All right, let's move on, if we could, please. Um, we have a question, ma'am, please, all right, Commissioner.
Uh, budget committee met last evening, uh, you should have two amendments in your package. If you want to refer to the second one first, the amount of a thousand dollars, uh, that was lined out, transferred approved by the budget committee, if nobody can come to the full commission. Uh, transferring from or past budget to share the part of budget. And then on the, uh... The first one, there is a correction on the, on the debit line out, the fund should be one twenty-two, which is the drug, the shared drug fund. Uh, count number thirty-nine thousand, which is drug fund fund balance, debit thirteen thousand, and credit to, uh, six four one fifty-seven eighteen. Uh, which is the, uh, drug fund, the finisher side, uh, credit to thirteen thousand for two thousand fifteen, Chevy Tahoe, and it comes with a positive recommendation for the budget committee.
Question, I know the pass, we've moved on from that phone, that is, okay, you go towards the top.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're gonna take these both, somebody else from the president.
We have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Mike, second, if you like. All right, any discussion? If none, we need a roll call, will be your Madam Clerk, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Debeere?
Yes.
Yellam?
Yes.
Grantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wright?
And Mr. Trevor, not, just a couple of announcements, I know this lease is due here, where Christie is too, Casey, uh, and Christie will be posting this tomorrow. We will have another budget meeting, uh, Monday the twenty-fourth, April, uh, six o'clock in the conference room here. And we will also be having one for sure, uh, maybe the second, at six o'clock, and that one will be in the train room, Davis Park. So, uh, and we probably will have a couple more than that, as we, to try to get to our, uh, goal of first reading on sixteen. But anything you, you gotta get to us or...
What time, what time is it?
Six. Both, both sixteen. And Christie will be posting on the website if we add more than that, but I know those two are coming up, she'll be posting the twenty-fourth tomorrow, uh, on the media, so... Just want to let her know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Pierce? Nice, I'm gonna bring your, uh, zoning administration, please, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hope this will go quicker than my... On the, uh, discussing. Uh, something that's going on, uh, in the zoning offices, we've seen an influx in increase in, uh, safer couples. Uh, the presence of one, one hundred and ten or more, with their addition to the towers and services they already have. Um, the planning, uh, commission, we recognized that we did not have any language in the resolution book for safer sites. Uh, historically, telecommunications towers have been placed into the general conversation of communication pathways and things like that. So what we did, we reached out to Southwest and see, uh, the government, Sheldon Merle, and my office, and his office co-authored this resolution. That basically, uh, defines where's and why's and what you provide from them to us as large as design standards, and we tell them setbacks, uh, applying to where the type of tower would be, a monopole or a transpole, and how it would fall, and things of that nature. We, uh, went so deep, you guys look at what you do in residential area as opposed to F A R, to commercials or industrial, and understanding those setbacks and requirements would be different, cultural requirements, or different for each category of rent use. This resolution will require, when we break into the public hearing, and allow anybody in the industry, anybody in the community to, uh, address what we published. It's very simple, very, um, straightforward, is much less stringent than what we see in some of the surrounding counties, but it does do one thing, it is provide language to the customers coming in, how they need, send their design packages in, and simplify things for the planning commission and how they approach it, so...
What you said, the recommendation was shelter?
Shelter and planning commission, Mr. DeBries on that, and if you have any questions for either one of us, I think, we can back to the rest.
Before we do that, we need to convene into the public hearing, uh, quickly, on this, uh, and this will address the, this resolution.
I believe we go into public hearing. Session.
Discussion. All right, all the same, I'm saying, uh... All of us. All right, we will be in, is anyone here that'd like to speak on the resolution, uh, for the definitions and provisions governing F A R, um, text, for the hardenings on the resolution? All right, seeing none, is there a motion, and to move back into record session?
So move.
So move, if you're set.
Say that.
All right, all in favor, please, sit by, thank you.
All right.
All of us. We're back in, and, uh, we need to... Commissioners, I would say, our recommendation motions of this, before. I believe that we, uh, accept the motion, uh, I make the motion that we move to accept the resolution proposed by Mr. Pierce.
Say.
Motion has been made, Harper, second, is in discussion. Seeing none, uh, we do not need a roll call, uh, the Madam Clerk, so we could signify the same, uh...
All right.
All opposed?
Like that.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. All right, let's see. Uh, you did have only agenda, uh, judgment when he come in and speak, but, uh, uh, he will not be able to be here tonight, and he will stay with you next month. All right, if we could, uh, we have some officials here for our, uh, Kelson, uh, Agentelle. And, and Mr. Gibson from the state. Welcome. He'd like to talk to us tonight about renovations, if it's gonna be, uh, for our, uh, health department.
Yeah, uh, this is another A R P, uh, grant opportunity, um, every county in the state has, uh, received at least four hundred fifty thousand dollars for renovations, so our health department, uh, seventeen counties getting a new facility with this A R P funding. Uh, I'm the project manager, work out of the national office, and I cover all eighty-nine rural counties, uh, and I'll cover the six major ones. But with this grant, there is a county funding, uh, requirement, it's a seventy-five twenty-five, uh, the state is gonna be willing to give you three hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The county responsibility is a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So that's a total of, of project cost of four hundred fifty thousand dollars. You don't have to vote on that or anything tonight, we have until March, uh, twenty twenty-four to allocate the funding, uh, and then we have until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, to spend the money. Um, so, we've, we've addressed some issues from Agentelle and her staff, but we've got some funding issues, boy, might need to run a camera down the drain line and address, uh, those issues, um... The exterior stuff on, on the building is coming off, additional casework and countertops for the nurses and, and the clerical staff. Uh, new furniture, some of that furniture is all it was need, which is, uh, is pretty old, so it definitely needs, needs upgrading in that way, but it would require a twenty-five percent raise from the county. Uh, these funds are a reimbursable grant, um, I'll have a project manager here in the western city, and I'll be here as well, so, so I'll receive the project, um, architectural fees are included. Uh, we'll have monthly progress meetings with the contractor, and we'll have somebody from an architectural firm, man himself, sign off and approve the invoice. Once you sign it off on, you know it's good to pay the manager, and, uh, you guys can pay the contractor, then you'll upload the invoice back to the state, and we'll reimburse you in other things. So, if, for instance, if a contractor brings you an invoice for a hundred thousand dollars for that month worth of work, uh, we, you'll send the invoice in for reimbursement to the state, so pay the contractor the hundred thousand, we'll cut your check back for seventy-five thousand. And that's how you do monthly, uh, we'll, we'll treat you for that opportunity.
And that should be, um, by March twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, you, you think they had to allocate, uh, you might make a decision now, but after that date, uh, the money, I'm gonna have to put it somewhere else. So it will be reimbursed, if, if you don't decide to, to move forward.
And completion date is being twenty twenty-six.
Yes, sir. And some counties don't have the funding in their budget this year, so they're moving it to the next year or the year after, which is perfectly fine, it's just, it's what, how it be about for the property, where we're flexible.
Would that help for the department a lot as well?
Yes, we can reply, uh, if each and a half resurfaces in, uh, sidewalks, whatever, the A D A issues, anything on that property, we can address.
Anybody have any questions?
So, so is there actually a list of, of items that y'all are gonna address that's a voteable?
Yes, we do have.
Agentelle and I, we, we visited with staff, and we paid the, we had a, a first phase probably two years ago, that was before you, where I was able to give the county three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to renovate, and that was a hundred percent state funded, but... We didn't get to do all the things we wanted to do, and we had to cut some things out, so we're gonna go back in there and finish the job correctly, so...
And I recently priced for furniture, it's only about sixty thousand dollars to furnish the entire department.
So, a year ago, when you donated a hundred thousand dollars for the new roof, does that count for this?
No, unfortunately, it hadn't come after March, uh, this year.
And what, what is the roof?
Yes, roof. Yeah, and so far, it's, it's all, uh, I haven't heard of it. Is it leaking again? Yeah.
Yes. Yes, everywhere, all right, open call. Well, that's, that's true, now, there is a, there is a port, you guys.
Yeah.
You know, we'll have to, uh, find that contractor to get over there.
Well, we were grateful, we appreciate it, because the health department, we do need to be upgraded, meaning the staff, they appreciate it, because things that we, like Josh said, that we were not able to do with the previous funding, that we will be able to do with this one.
Right. All right.
Thank you, thank you, consider it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Commissioners, we have, uh, a list of known risks, uh, for you to have a place to, you know, chance to look at those, and we'll go on the news.
Come in, great. Second.
First, second, any discussion on those? If not, um, only a very recent time, saying that.
All right.
Of course, like that. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you be again? All right, we've got some resolutions tonight, um... I don't believe, uh, in what is here from the Carl Perkins Center. I've been on that board in the past present, uh, presidency for several years ago, um, but I'd like to read this, it's a quick, we need to have a few meetings, but I'd like to read this just for a second. We need to recognize that child abuse in the late is a serious and growing problem that changes lifestyle for nearly four million, four million of our nation's children annually. This problem has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, especially on racial, religious, social, economic, geographic families, and in the children following the road to a successful future. And we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. And whereas the Carl Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse, through its parent training, educational programs, community service activities, supports the community, and convening and preventing and dealing with child abuse to improve the quality of family life for our children and families. Now we further recommend the Carl Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse, for its continued success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse, and urge full and public support of their successful, um, efforts. And, uh, we are recognizing and proclaiming that this month, um, of April, uh, be observed as child abuse prevention, involving Hardin County. And I've set my seal, I'll be signing that, um, and then, uh, Mayor Tizik is waiting, Mayor, Mayor Tizik, I think. But I will present that again, of course, to the board. Uh, we do have one, and, uh...
Mayor Holt, uh, Miss Newsverge, she's a...
Yes, I see, that's good. I'll present that to you, will you do that, will you do that now, present? Present to you that? Okay. Gentlemen, if you want to, okay. This is for our child abuse prevention. I'm gonna step out, uh, just a little bit, we have someone here in special attendance as well. Uh, proclamation recognizing Blue and Green Day in the South. Whereas every year, National Donate Life observes Blue and Green Day. To amplify the importance of registering as an organ and tissue donor, encourage the public to wear blue and green to raise awareness. Whereas more than a hundred thousand Americans, including four thousand in the mid-south area, are currently on the national transplant waiting list. Whereas another person is added to the waiting list every nine minutes, and on average, seventeen people die every day because the organs they need are not donated in time. Whereas we can do our part to save lives by educating and encouraging our peers and loved ones to register as an organ and tissue donor. Whereas we hold these, that they have saved lives through the gift of donation to the highest guard, and are grateful for their selflessness. Now therefore, I'm talking to us, Mayor Hardeman County, to hear about the claim, and this was last week, that's the tenth day of April, in honor of Blue and Green Day in the South, Hardeman County, and encourage all residents to promote the importance of organ and tissue donations. I have agreed to set my hand and cause the fix the seal of Hardeman County today. And, uh, I want to recognize someone very special here, my friend, friend of mine. She is a double transplant recipient, two heart transplants. Why don't you come up, please? Thank you. All right, do you want to say anything?
Uh, I would just like to say that, um, I have a goal. Um, the Lord laid it on my heart, uh, that I want to recognize our organ donors here in Hardeman County. I did not realize, I've got a Facebook page, it's Hardeman County Donate Life, and I put that on there, and I did not realize just how many organ donors that we have in Hardeman County. There's a bunch, and I know, yeah, some of you may know of an organ donor, or I have a family member that donated the organs, but I want to do something. I want to, um, the Lord laid it on my heart, I want to say that, to do a memorial flower garden, uh, in honor of these organ donors. Now we just gotta find a place for it. So y'all just be praying about that, but organ donation is very important to me, 'cause I would not be here if it wasn't. I received my first heart in two thousand fifteen, if I hadn't received it, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have lived. Then it, um, started failing me in the second, and I had to have a second one in two thousand twenty. I, I got that heart within about fifteen days of being listed. So I believe in it, wholeheartedly, and I have many friends that were organs, that have received organs as well. And so this is a, um, something near and dear to my heart. So if you're not an organ donor, please sign up, 'cause you can make a difference in somebody's life. Thank you.
Very busy month. We also have proclamation for round. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of the city and the county. Whereas it seems involved in Hardeman County, should be a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and designed to support their needs for justice and healing. Whereas regular sexual assault and sexual harassment impact there, communities, as seen by statistics, indicate that one in four women and one in six men experience sexual assault in their lifetime. Whereas, current estimates suggest that no more than fifteen percent of sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement, and less than three percent will result from conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. Whereas the city of Hardeman and the county of Hardeman acknowledge that survivors of sexual violence belong to diverse backgrounds, uh, identities, cultures, and communities in joint rap, and celebrate the unique characteristics of survivors, which help them be in the streets of their own, uh, residences. And is there anyone here from round? On the agenda, you'll see, um, thi- this is the last one for, of course, uh, this is for autism. Uh, there was another one for Linda Fugel, we know that's passed away. She was the longest-serving elected official, uh, Tennessee at the time. Uh, she passed, she was in office, uh, but she retired, I guess, over fifty years. The family had asked me to wait till next month, and they could all be here, so that we could present the proclamation to them. So out of respect for their wishes, uh, we will not have that tonight, we'll have it next month. And, uh, for now, I'd like to read something, please, this is our most proclamation. Julian, would you like to come up, please, sir? National Autism Awareness. Whereas in honor of April, as National Autism Awareness Month in Hardeman County, Tennessee, we'd like to take steps to increase awareness and understanding of the disorder, and whereas autism is a result of a neurological disorder, it causes widening impairments in social communication and reduced, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone. Whereas autism is a fast-destruction development disability in the United States, affecting more than three million people per year. Whereas a recognition of the growing needs of autism and the need to provide services to help individuals and families who are affected, whereas Hardeman County is honored to take part in annual observation and evaluation of Autism Awareness Month, and hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder. Now therefore, I talk to us, Mayor of Hardeman County, to hear about the claim of April as Autism Awareness Month, to raise public awareness of autism and the numerous issues surrounding autism. I'd like to present this to, uh, Mayor Julian Matisse. There's a reason I asked Julian here tonight, to accept this.
Playing my, my, you guys probably, you saw my wife on Facebook, she shares our entire life story, so. Uh, our, our youngest boy, Joel, uh, he got his official diagnosis, a level three autism, I think, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, he's, uh, greatest kid you ever meet, uh, in his mind, he's perfect, and his, us that's different. Uh, so thank you for this, and I would just say, uh, pray for any family that's affected by this, uh, but it's a very, very unique thing, and it's a blessing, and we, the county has a blessing, and God will give us a special child like Joel, so thank you, that's all I, thank you guys for our acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, if you could, um, go move next on our agenda, please. Lawson, um, update, uh, attorney, and Sheriff, from the press.
Good evening. Um, the, uh, the Sheriff's, all suits are all wrapped up, now that are pretty much wrapped up when I started, but that's been, um, finally taken care of. Um, the, uh, Perry versus Hardeman County, the FLSA case, Judge Anderson, uh, moved that trial to, from August to October twenty-three, uh, and the, uh, Cornell case, which is the retaliation case, was to go to trial this month, but the, uh, neither side was ready for it, the, the judge has moved it to August twenty-first, which was the date that the, uh, Perry trial was to start. And, uh... And then, of course, the Royal OHS lawsuit, that's been, this has been taken care of, that's off the, off the county's, uh, sheet. Uh, and then there are several lawsuits, uh, that are being defended by either a lawyer obtained by the insurance company or a lawyer hired by Corus Civic, because the great deal of Corus Civic is that when the county assumes they own their lawsuits, they provide the attorney for that, and, uh, I can go over the names of those real quick. Uh, one, this one is, um, still pending, and the insurance company has hired, uh, a lawyer in Jackson and Chris Nathan to defend it. I think the Pentagon's firm had a conflict against, uh, Joy versus Sunny, and I, it's, uh, it's Jonathan Joy, I believe. There's another one involving Jeffrey Joy, that settled, uh, this past week, and then there's the, uh, Lawler versus Hardeman County case, and that's on appeal for the Sixth Circuit, because Judge Anderson denied the, uh, motion to qualify immunity, and you can appeal that issue for the Sixth Circuit, although the case is, uh, still out there. And that's being defended by, uh, Nathan, Phil, the Pentagon's firm. And then there are the three, what I call the Piccolo Lake lawsuits. Uh, one of those is, uh, it's document number nine, the one nine six three one, it was dismissed because the chancellor found that the BZA's approval of the application was not preceded by, uh, by recommendation by regional planning commissions, that case is done, and there are two others, and the next step to those is to file the transcripts of the, of the hearings, and then the, all the exhibits with, uh, with the chancellor court, and then the chancellor court will, uh, will decide on those, whether the, uh, whether the, uh, action by, uh, planning commission was acted on. And then, of course, the TDEC lawsuit, uh, brought by, uh, the legislature, so that's been resolved, and, uh, and then there's Eddie Tardy versus Corus Civic, again, that's being defended by, uh, by a lawyer hired by Corus Civic. It's not even a thing that the cabinet's filed before, and the only thing I do on those cases is occasionally somebody calls me, one of the lawyers, says, "What's going on with her?" I'll check it, but I don't, uh, I don't feel afraid of that, because I should have other attorneys. And the, uh, last case, uh, we had to, uh, Mr. Pierce is still here, we had to, uh, take Andrew Yumeneos to court, he built a building, and I don't remember the exact location of Mr. Pierce if you have any to tell him, but, uh, Mr. Yumeneos had, uh, he built his building without getting the proper permits, and then as a result of that, he didn't have his, uh, his outline for how the buildings would be put, where it's gonna be put, so it's too close to the light lane, and so he followed the flight for mandatory injunction, uh, chancellor called around that, and, uh, Mr. Yumeneos ended up moving the building back to satisfactory with, uh, Mr. Pierce, so that lawsuit was just waiting to get a final order, and they're just missing it, but it was just something he had to do, because he ignored, uh, uh, Mr. Pierce's predecessor, she contacted him about him not getting the proper, uh, permits, and then he continued that with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Pierce, and had a placement report to give attention. Building's been moved out and all that, so I can carry it now.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Where was that located?
From the Yumeneos?
It was, uh, sixty-four, this one in town, uh, in the old westers.
Thank you. And he at one time had a trailer on there that somebody was living in, uh, but he, he'd already taken care of that and moved that out, so.
Just letting that, please. Yes, sir. Um, talking about the lawsuits, our, our last meeting, we discussed, uh, and I made a motion to, uh, to reject the, uh, offer on the Perry lawsuit. I don't believe that there's a commissioner sitting up here that doesn't feel that these people are owing money, including myself. They're owing money, and, um, just because we reject something doesn't mean that we're not open to listening and talking about something, so. With that being said, tonight, I would like to make a motion that we offer to settle this lawsuit for one point two million dollars. Okay, there's been a motion made, uh, by Commissioner Grant. Is there a, is there a second?
I was looking.
Here we have. Commissioner Bell? Okay. Commissioner Bell? Second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
And also, can I, can I amend that motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, also say that, uh, that should, uh, we would like to have an answer of acceptance or rejection by, before the next commissioner.
By whom?
By me. Your attorney. Other sentence or rejection?
Our comment, that, that motion is, uh, one, one point two million, just for the settlement, not with the, the attorney fees.
Correct. I believe the attorney fees are decided upon by the judge, aren't they? They don't?
Yes, they can be, but you know, you can negotiate the settlement or the judge can decide.
Yeah, I'm just addressing the lawsuit, so.
Okay, just the damages.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second on the floor. If there's no more discussion, are you doing any, uh, type question, do you need?
They come together and accept, say that they do accept. That's what we make.
Okay, so we do not need a little call vote?
We need to go on this, uh, God rise, he made a motion to, to settle, so we should approve that motion, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, he got your hundred, that's, you can leave the call vote on that. Okay.
Question?
What?
Yes, sir.
Has been any effort made since the last week to go and negotiate?
Uh, a little bit, uh, Mr. Bing had contacted the, uh, attorney, uh, plaintiff's attorney, uh, plaintiff's attorney, and asked him about floor and the, uh, floor is demand, and he declined to do that, because lawyers usually don't denigrate themselves, so, uh, perhaps this will help get that lit.
What's the next one? Got another question.
I just was wanting to clarify what we're voting for. We're voting for not on the amount, but just for the settlement.
I'm voting on the amount.
My, my, my motion is that we're voting to settle this lawsuit for one point two million dollars, and they're, they're looking until before our next, kind of commissioner can give us an answer this round, other sentence or rejection. Okay, we have a motion in second, if any more discussion. Pierce, time, do we need a little call vote? All right, and Madam Clerk, if you could, we just will have a little call vote.
There you go.
Yes.
Lover?
Oh.
Devere?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jacob? Kenmore?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Sain?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, um, for announcements, uh, we do have just a few. Uh, I do want to say that, um, that the animal shelter, uh, could already be volunteers, and we're asking for volunteers for our animal, um, shelter, HAA, and, uh, we want to say, please, please pick up your litter in this county, we want to keep it clean, and we've got a lot of work going on with the Sheds Farming, with the litter grain, and we have a beautiful county, folks, we need to remember that, and don't, don't throw your trash on side roads, and I'm not up here preaching, but, uh, but if you need me to, I might. Uh, we need to address that, and, uh, please do something. All right, we have our next commissioner, we need us one to be late at sixteen, and then, uh, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move it adjourned.
Move that to those four.
That's a second, that's, that's actually, uh, to the public comments. We have.
Next, thank you, I move it adjourned.
Second? We're now adjourned, and we'll move into public comments, and we'll have Mr. Clifford who'd like to speak. Clifford, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak with the county commissioners
Mr. Mayor, I always thank you for allowing me to speak with the county commissioners about the lawsuits the county is facing. I had no idea we had eighty-five plaintiffs. I did not pay much attention to the talk at the table, off the table, at first. When I was told the commissioners had voted fourteen to one to settle the lawsuit by the sheriff, I thought the matter was settled. I was then told that the former mayor had voted the fourteen to one vote of the county commission to settle the lawsuit, and then hired another attorney and promised to overturn the case. We had one hundred thousand dollars of liability insurance for legal fees. Once the settlement exceeded a hundred thousand dollars, the insurance company wrote a check for one hundred thousand dollars and told us we were on our own. When I heard that we had spent a few hundred thousand dollars in legal fees since the commissioners had voted to settle the case, I knew it was time for me to talk to my commissioner. I went to one of my commissioners and asked him, what was the lawsuit about? He said it was all the sheriff's fault. I asked him, why did the budget committee cut the sheriff's budgets? He said, and I quote, "I tell you the truth, Richard, we did not have the money." I said, "What about these lawsuits that might end up costing us over five hundred thousand and maybe a few million?" He said, and I quote, "We have plenty of money for these lawsuits." At that time, I knew I was wasting my time. I went to another one of my commissioners complaining about the legal fees we were facing. After some discussion, he got a little upset. I informed him that another commissioner had told me the county had plenty of money for the lawsuits. I said, "The county did not have plenty of money." He said, "The county did not have money." I suggested he inform the commissioner, I had just talked to him. There was another commissioner out in my district that I thought I could reach him with. After some, some discussion, I asked him if he would make a motion in the next few to settle this lawsuit and cut our losses. I have been told he ambushed the attorney our new mayor has hired and rehired the attorney from Covington. We have already paid the attorney from Covington seven hundred thousand dollars in legal fees, and what if we're caught? We could have buried that money in the landfill and end the same result. Are you proud of the legal fees you have put on the back of the taxpayers since I talked to you? Our new attorney has expertise in legal law. I did not know much about, uh, how much knowledge she had about legal law. My former attorney told these commissioners they had better settle this lawsuit or it could cost the taxpayers at least five hundred thousand dollars and maybe in the millions, and possibly bankrupt the county. The commissioners did not accept Chip Pierce's advice, they were paying him for legal advice. I cannot imagine anyone not calling me twice of their attorney. I have told some commissioners that they are going to make, that, that they are not going to bankrupt this county, but they are going to let the judge bankrupt this county. The judge is beat you to the pulp. He turned this case, case over to you and our attorney to negotiate a settlement. It was very apparent we did not negotiate in good faith, and the judge is not going to like it. Your constituents are not going to accept this explanation. They did not elect the judge to manage this county. They elected you to manage this county, and they are going to hold you accountable for these expenses. The citizens of this county are smart enough to know that the former mayor and county commissioners are the ones who refused to negotiate the settlement and then continued to run up the attorney fees and the amount of judgment for the plaintiffs. The citizens will look at the legal expenses and how they have grown from the beginning of the lawsuit to now. When the commissioners let the former mayor hire another attorney, they had voted fourteen to one to settle the lawsuit. That is the day the commissioners stopped representing their constituents and started calling the advice of the former mayor. Last month, the commissioners voted seventy-eight to not settle the lawsuits we are facing. I understand the county voted, voted on at least almost six million dollars. I was told the county has seventy million, seven hundred thou- ten hundred fifty thousand in reserves. Six million dollars represents fifty-seven percent of the annual taxes we pay in a year. I want to thank you commissioners that voted to settle this lawsuit. I think we, you were very wise. Tonight, I hope and pray that one of you commissioners will change your vote so the mayor can notify our new attorney, we are ready to settle this lawsuit and get on with the other issues facing this county. I hope all of you know that the county cannot bankrupt, bankrupt you, and the judge cannot bankrupt the county. If our finances get bad enough, the state control will come down and set our tax rate to make sure our county is financially sound. I want the worst of Hardman County, and I really think you do too. Let's settle this and end this madness. Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting... I want to wish you the best. I also hope when you get a little down and a little discouraged, you will go to God and ask him for a little, little wisdom that he be King Solomon. You may also want to pray that one of these commissioners will change their vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Yes, uh, commissioners, we have, we have a card that we'd like for you to sign with Commissioner Pope, and we have him here, if you could, please.